Nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, cool.
Bye.
Jake. Hello. Hey, John.
We are recording.
Good to know.
It makes me nervous when people slide in this late.
I know. I have 5:57, so they're pushing it.
When does school start again?
Um, what, gosh, Christina.
It's a Wednesday. It's August. Why can't I open my calendar? August 31st?
Yeah.
Still ways off.
Yeah, I got a little bit of time. Lots to do in the meantime.
I heard about a school job. I think it's up in uh, Gardner or something like that, that the contractor told them a week or two ago that that could be done. And that they don't have a temporary location and that could be able to open school like October or something like that.
Oh, my word. That's a nightmare.
Yeah.
That's a nightmare.
They tore down an old building already.
Oh. Gotta be somebody in a neighboring town that has an old facility.
Yeah. Glad I'm not involved with that one.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I know. You know, the DRA is doing the vocational school and the new Burlington Vermont High School and Technical Center. And they're in an old Macy's like downtown on Church Street. Their entire high school for like two years has been in the old Macy's at the mall.
It's one solution.
Yeah. Wild.
I always thought the Berkshire Mall would have been a good place for a regional school, but I guess they're gonna turn that into a cannabis grow facility now.
There you go.
I don't think it had folded at the time that we were looking around. We actually did look for alternate facilities to at least for a year, you know, at one point.
Wow. Yeah.
You over there?
No outgoing concern at that point. Wow.
I remember when it opened.
Do you really?
Oh, yeah.
Wow. Sad, kind of sad.
Cannabis should be a good revenue source for the town.
Yeah, that's a good reuse. Yeah, that's a infinitely better than sitting empty. You know, that was nicely done to figure out a way to make that happen.
I've been involved in a couple of those growth facilities. Those buildings are absolute energy hogs. Energy that they use is sinful.
Even with solar and other forms of renewable energy.
So the solar would definitely help.
Yeah.
The projects I've been involved in haven't used solar.
Yeah, that would be crazy to create that kind of a growth facility without solar and water and other forms of renewable energy. I hope they consider it in Lanesboro because I, yeah. Absolutely. The amount of light and heat that goes into that.
And they pump carbon dioxide into those facilities for 12 hours a day. So there's a lot of stuff going on there.
Wow.
Eve, are you Kayla and Liz? Are you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. It's gonna be labeled that way.
We knew who you were.
Yep.
I actually was wondering who that was. I had not put two and two together.
Well, I saw you were doubly labeled at the finance committee.
So I think we can get going because it's just going to be the four of us.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Curtis isn't here either? We can hear you. Yeah. Curtis isn't coming either?
Nope. I just found out.
Okay.
All right. So I would like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, August 11th, 2022. It is 6:02 PM and we are meeting remotely via Zoom. The meeting will be broadcast on Willie Net TV Channel 1302 in Williamstown and posted to the Mount Greylock Regional School District YouTube page 24 hours after the meeting. Um, why don't like to call the role Kerry Green?
Here.
Ursula Malloy?
Here.
Steve Miller?
Yeah.
And I'm Christina Conry. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation, resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. First up on the agenda is public comment. I don't see any members of the public present. I don't have any emails. So we will move on to the next agenda item, which is approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the July 14th, 2022 minutes?
Miller moves.
Miller moves. Do I have a second? Ursula seconds. Any discussion?
I have discussion.
Okay.
Um, so in the section that talks about the appointing of the FSC, which is what is that supposed to be?
Selection Committee?
Oh, the, hmm, okay. So this was supposed to be the designer selection committee. So I think what this is supposed to say is that the finance, the school committee moves.
Oh, you know what? No, it's, I think the FSC is the finance subcommittee.
Oh, the finance subcommittee moved it in. Oh, that's what it was.
Yeah.
Okay, the finance subcommittee moved it. Oh, right. Okay, great. I just got the acronym mixed up.
Um, and that's a good point, Kerry, with acronyms. We might want to make a note to the, to the note taker to use the term with the acronym the first time.
First. Yeah.
You can always just do a search and replace after you take the notes. So you can write FSC and then just search and replace.
I mean, I'd find use the acronym. It's just important the first time it's used to define it.
Okay, that was it for me.
Okay. Anything else with the July 14th minutes? Okay, hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Um, I guess I go first. Conry, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Milla, I.
Thank you. That motion passes.
Christina, could I suggest a correction to tonight's agenda?
Sure.
Because I'm gonna forget by the time we get to the end of it. We changed the date of the policy subcommittee, the next meeting, to August 31st.
Okay.
So if you could make a note of that and then announce it correctly at the end, that would be great.
That's for the policy and governance or finance?
Yes, policy and governance, which was on the 23rd, but the date has changed to the 31st.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So next up on the agenda is the finance subcommittee report. So I will turn it over to Kerry Green.
All right. So the finance subcommittee met just this afternoon as we often do before these meetings. And we discussed the contract proposal from CHA for the track and field project. John Benzinger is here from our OPM team, Skanska, and he has reviewed the contract proposal, as has our administration, as has our legal counsel. The finance subcommittee reached consensus. We did not have a vote on our agenda. So we did not vote to recommend it, but we all agreed to that we support it. And with that said, wow, it's really just the finance subcommittee here plus Christina. I'm not sure there are going to be that many questions, but Christina, do you have questions? And if not, maybe John, I don't know if you have anything that you want to say about this. We can say that the proposal is for $250,000, which is slightly above the 10% kind of that we were looking for, but it also includes some ad alternates, which will give us a broad sense of some of the projects that we may or may not be able to fit into this project, but we may be in a good position to do down the road. So it's a, as Jake said in our finance subcommittee meeting, it's a good value for that dollar amount.
Great. Thank you. I don't have any specific questions, so.
Well, maybe we can move it and then we can open it up. And if John wants to say anything at that point, we can do it. So this is, I'll move the design professional services for field and track project from CHA proposal number X 77617R2.
I will second that.
All right. So now John or Jake, did you, either of you want to say anything about this?
I think we've chosen a great firm, Kerry. I think they did the track at Williams. They have a very deep resume of track and field projects. They're comfortable with a natural turf field. We were able to negotiate a little money out of their initial proposal. So I'm very comfortable with them. I think we made a great choice.
Thanks, John. Yeah, I think the last time we reported to the school committee, we hadn't yet done our interviews, obviously. And we did interview two firms. And we did unanimously select CHA to negotiate for the contract. And that's where we are now. We've got the contract that they proposed, so. Jake, anything to add or?
I, you know, I'd like to, like to just thank you, Kerry and Joe and Rob Winok and Lindsey Von Holtz and Brian Gill for, for doing these interviews and for, for John and Aaron Singer setting them up for us. And I'm with John and with you, Kerry. I think we got a great firm. I think their proposal indicated they have done hundreds of natural grass fields over the 30 years of their athletic field division has been in existence. And, and I do thank John for, for, for doing a lot of work between when this initial proposal came in and getting it ready for this afternoon and this evening to get the, the pencil sharpened so we could get the best value for the, for the money that we're, we're spending on this project. So, and, and now, you know, with, with, if there's a successful vote to go ahead here in a minute, we will start to gather the, the folks that need to weigh in on, on the specifics of the track and lacrosse and soccer and football space that's going to be in between, in the track. So we can get that, that next team going and, and really start full speed ahead with this project, which is very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we need to have a discussion soon about the composition of that next group? Or are we talking about the same group? Essentially.
I think we're probably talking about the same group, but also making sure we, you know, Lindsey was there to represent sort of all of athletics. Brian Gill was there to make sure that, that, that we had deep, deep, deep track and field expertise coming in on a designer. This next phase would really be the same group, including you, if you're willing, and Rob and Joe, but also bringing in the lacrosse spokes, some, some, a person or two to represent football because that, you know, we, we don't know what the future holds for that. And the soccer, have some representatives from our soccer programs to make sure that we're to make sure that, that, that we're getting the track we want, that, that the, the field sports, the, the sports that will play on the infield get, get what they want and what they need to.
Jake, I might suggest that you have, we had an architect selection team, you had an OPM selection group. They have a, I'll use the term school building committee, or maybe it's track building committee, you know, with a small group of decision makers. I think the group you suggested is appropriate. And then we can solicit feedback from other stakeholders as needed.
Yep.
About a track and a field building committee or a track and a field project committee?
Perfect.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. And John, how soon do we need a formal committee to be established? I mean, ideally.
We, I'm sorry, we talked about having a kickoff meeting not next week, but the following week with CHA. So I don't know that, I think they're gonna want to see the stakeholders and understand what the program needs to be. So I don't know that you necessarily need the committee for them, but you certainly, you know, ideally, I guess if you had your committee forum, they could attend that meeting as well.
I, I, I think, I don't think that's too aggressive of a timeline. I think if we're looking at the week after next week, we can, we can pull that group together in that timeframe.
All right. And then maybe at the next school committee meeting, we can have a kind of a retroactive vote to approve them as the school, as the track and field project committee.
Good idea.
Okay. All right. Well, having laid that out, I guess the only other thing I would add is that it is an aggressive timeline by our own request. And we are looking to have substantial completion by the end of summer 2023. Now, given that this is a, a natural grass field, we don't think, John, am I correct? That we would be able to use this field in the fall of 2023. We're looking more at spring 2024 or the following fall.
Most people recommend two growing seasons before you use a field, unless you sod it, which I think we'll look at.
Yep.
Potentially sod it. So you'll be able to use the track in the spring of 24, I guess it would be.
24. Okay.
Not necessarily the lacrosse field in the spring unless we did sod it. So it'd probably be, the field would be the fall of 24.
Okay, unless we sod it. All right. That's, that's good information for folks to know. All right. It's okay if we call for a vote or Christina, did you have?
No, this is great. I, this is awesome. It's really exciting. Thank you to everyone for all the time and effort put into this.
Yeah, it is exciting. It's super exciting to be able to move, move forward with this. So motion has been made and seconded. Let's call for a roll call vote in support of the motion.
Conry, I.
Green, I.
Boy, I.
Milla, I.
Great. That motion passes unanimously. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, John. Thanks for attending.
Yeah, we'll drop off them. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Um, I think that's it. Let me just check designer selection committee report sort of given within the context. And yeah, so that's it for finance subcommittee.
Great. Thank you. So next up on the agenda is the policy and governance subcommittee report. And the chair, that committee is not here right now, so I am passing it back to Kerry.
Oh, joy. Thanks, Christina. So I'm, I'm gonna cheat and just kind of read off the minutes of the policy subcommittee. I'm not nearly as I don't know, I'm not Jose, so I'm not going to pretend to be. But I will give you some sense of what we've talked about in the policy subcommittee prior to moving into the policies that we need to approve tonight. So in our last policy subcommittee, which was July 20th, we talked about the self-evaluation of the school committee and decided that we would try to schedule a retreat in the November to January range to talk about those results as a committee. And we also talked about the fact that, you know, there, there was no one thing that stood out as being problematic, which Jake's interpretation at least was that we're actually a fairly effective committee, or maybe you said very effective. I don't know. But the overall sense is that we are an effective committee and continuing to talk about how we operate is always a good idea, but that we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that we're actually getting work done. Um, so there will be a request, if there hasn't been already, for a school committee retreat coming up in the fall. We talked about the superintendent evaluation process and the timing for that. And Jake, I think maybe you're gonna talk about this a little bit as well at some point, but we would like to, you know, bring the committee back under compliance. We're essentially out of compliance for not evaluating the superintendent. It is one, not formally evaluating, where it is one of our three jobs evaluating the superintendent, maintaining a policy manual and hiring the superintendent. So, you know, those are, they're all important. I'm not gonna say they're equally important, but there is a desire certainly amongst the policy and government, governance group to come up with a protocol for evaluating the superintendent. I'm just gonna read here. The subcommittee agreed that the process should meet our obligations as a committee. It should be helpful to Jake and the district. It should not include work that amounts to bureaucratic busywork. The timing should be aligned with the contract renewal process for the superintendent. So the plan is for Jake to draft a proposal for our next meeting, which as I said, is on August 31st, for how he might be evaluated and the committee can review and amend this and recommend it to the school committee at the September meeting. So more to come on that, but it's on our radar. It's risen to a level of priority that will perhaps get into a timing, a system of evaluating in the fall rather than in the spring so that it is in in line with the goal setting, but also prior to committee members rotating off, right? Because we're regional committee members rotate off potentially in November. And that always makes it problematic for doing evaluations in a congressional election year. Oh, let's see.
Jerry, can I ask, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Um, my question is, will the full committee prior to our next meeting have access maybe to the draft minutes? So we have a little heads up of the discussion that happened during the policy subcommittee meeting prior to then sort of having a discussion about whatever is determined.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah. So the way, Jake, can you ask Carol to send the minutes on to the full committee after the next policy committee meet, meeting? Thank you. So I attended the MASC workshop on policy. And the one takeaway, and this kind of leads in back us, leads us back to the agenda items, is that our policies and procedures should always be in line with each other. If we vote on, sorry, let me just get back to the agenda. So we have an approval form on the agenda, which would have been out of compliance once we voted the new field trip update. So this is a good, this is an example of good practice, right? We're updating a policy and looking at the procedure at the same time to make sure that it is in line with the policy. And those are the kinds of things that we as a district are committing to staying on top of. It requires work by our administration, by the we as a district are committing to staying on top of. It requires work by our administration, by the the, um, person in Carol's position now. Um, but it means that, you know, we won't run into problems with, you know, procedures that aren't, um, reflective of our current policies. Um, something that school committees don't often think about is the fact that whatever was voted last is actually what, um, is considered, um, binding, I guess, what carries, I use the term what carries the day, right? So if we vote, if there was a procedure that was approved, we don't approve procedures, but just for instance, if there was a procedure that was approved and it's not in line with the policy, then the policy would be out of date. Um, and if we didn't update it, then we could get it, there are districts that have gotten into trouble by having these things out of line. Um, we make, we create a liability, um, for ourselves if, if we don't stay on top of it. So it was a good kind of reminder, um, that of what we need to do, but it was also a reminder that we're way far ahead of a lot of districts that don't even have up-to-date policy manuals. Uh, the fact that we have our policy manual, um, online with M A S C puts us kind of light years ahead of some districts that are still trying to, um, figure out which policies they're missing. So I think we're in really good shape and, um, we're just going to continue to, you know, do good work around this. So with that said, um, we have policy A C A B dash R, sexual harassment policy for harassment against employees. This is the second read, so I'd like to move that policy, um, for a vote. Um, and I'll just say, we didn't receive any feedback from the school committee at the last meeting, and we haven't received any feedback from the public in between the first read and the second read. So, um, I'd like to move that policy.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, is there discussion? No. Hearing none, uh, roll call vote?
Henry, I.
Green, I. You were muted, Ursula?
It doesn't say she's muted, though.
I'm not. I don't know why.
Oh, and here you are. I think there's a delay. I think there's a delay in when you hit unmute, maybe. I don't know.
Sorry. Malloy, I.
Mila, I.
Um, all right, thanks. That motion passes unanimously. Um, moving on to policy I J O A. Uh, field trip updates. This is also the second read, and we haven't received any feedback on this, um, between the first read and the second read. So I'll move that policy.
I will second that.
Is there any discussion? So this is one that folks might be interested in, um, knowing something about, but we did talk about it, right, at the last?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Okay, great. So, um, that's been moved and seconded. No discussion. Roll call vote?
Henry, I.
Green, I.
Boy, I.
Mila, I.
Uh, thank you. That is unanimous. So Jake, I'm a little bit, um, I'm not sure that, that we should be approving a form. Um, and it's actually one of the things I asked at the M A S C workshop, you know, whether we should have the pro- procedures and protocols in the policy manual, and the answer was absolutely not.
Yeah.
Because the school committee doesn't approve protocols and procedures. We only approve policies, and to put them together would kind of, um, indicate that, that we had some kind of say, and, I mean, we typically hear about.
Yeah.
What's that?
Uh, it does start to blur some lines, you know, you sort of give the, here's, here's the marching orders, the rules we're gonna follow. And then the administration's work is to figure out how do we do this in a way that's orderly and, 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 you know, meets, meets the letter of the policy, but also the spirit of the policy. So we can certainly, we did just wanna, um, show this for, you know, not, certainly not requiring a vote, but just showing that we, we, we did update the approval form for field trips to reflect the changes that were made in the policy to, to your point from, from five minutes ago about making sure that we're on parallel tracks and staying
Right.
in unison on these.
Great. And I really appreciate that. I like to know what the procedures are, because as school committee members, we hear about it when there's something that's kind of um, not working well, either for a parent or for a staff member, um, so it's true. Sorry. So it's, it's great to actually know, um, be able to see what it is we have in place, you know, for procedures. Thanks for that. So no, no other votes required here.
Great. So that's it, I think, for the policy and governance subcommittee.
Yay.
Are really sticking to our, um, estimated times tonight. Next up on the agenda is the business administrative, administrator report. Um, so is that you, Jake?
Yeah, I'm gonna do this tonight. Christina, if you could allow me to share the screen. Um, the good news is, this is gonna be probably a little longer than usual, but my report's going to be much shorter and certainly not the full forty-five minutes. Um, so I will, I'm going to put a, uh, a, um, PowerPoint up and, um, are folks seeing that? It's a picture of the Mount Greylock Regional School Campus. Um, good, just gonna. So I have all of you shrunken down, uh, to one box. So if anybody has questions or comments, please just let me know verbally. Um, or, or Christina, if you can keep an eye. Um, we received on July twenty-eighth, the, the, the final draft audit from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Um, and really, this, this final audit is just the final look of, uh, the, the last payment, uh, toward the grant that helped the, the state's portion of paying, uh, for M G R S. Uh, this is sort of the, the final accounting that lets us know at the end of the project, how much did the Commonwealth pay through the M S B A and how much did we pay, uh, as two towns coming together to, to build this magnificent, uh, school that our kids are fortunate enough to, to go to. Um, and so we, we, this is a pretty big occasion, so we, it, it's, it's worth just taking a pause to, to look at this a little bit in depth, but, but, uh, primarily just to say some thank yous as, um, including, uh, people on, on this meeting and on this Zoom. Um, years and years and years, uh, of, uh, of your life and so much of your energy and effort going into making this reality for young people happen. And, uh, so we're just gonna go through that, through this, this evening. Um, building a new school for a community, it's, it's such a massive thing. It's, it's very often, it's a once-in-a-generation opportunity. Um, spending a little time in each of our schools this week, it was really remarkable for me to consider that, um, Williamstown School is about twenty years old, twenty-one years old. The Lanesboro Elementary School is, uh, twenty, twenty-one years old. And now we have a, a Mount Greylock Regional that opened in, uh, two thousand eighteen. And so, uh, this, this, our particular region, these two communities have had these amazing opportunities. And, uh, I feel very fortunate getting to be here, and I'm very grateful to so many people that came before that, uh, folks took advantage of these once-in-a-generation opportunities, and, uh, we now have three excellent places for our, our teachers and paraprofessionals and secretaries and, and nutrition staff and, um, uh, custodians to do their work all in service to our children. Uh, building a new school is just really, it's the most optimistic, future-focused, hopeful expenditure that, uh, that any community can take on. Building a new school gives your community a, a real point of pride. It gives your community a very special gathering place. Um, I couldn't help but think that when the town meeting for Williamstown was in the gymnasium just a couple of days after graduation, that, uh, you know, on Saturday, we had this magnificent gathering of, of family and friends to celebrate our seniors, and three days later, uh, another magnificent gathering of, of, of people to, uh, to do the town's business to, uh, to, to, to stay operational for another year in service to the town. Um, so it's really exciting. Uh, I never walked through a school building, and particularly a high school, where it just doesn't strike me that, um, a, a, a a school is a staging area where the trajectories of a lifetime are really being developed and given the fuel uh, to go as high and as far as young people can go. Um, this new school that all of you came together to build will absolutely has and will serve as a launchpad for um, thousands of young lives that will make the world a better place, and whatever part of the world our graduates happen to be in a better place. And, um, finally, a school does other things, but finally, for our purposes, uh, this school just sure serves as a really shining and bright example of what good things can grow from, from communities coming together in a concerted effort. Uh, and, and including the Commonwealth itself through the Mass School Building Association, which is really a vital partner at every community in the Commonwealth. Um, you know, we pay a five percent sales tax um, on every dollar, one penny of that sales tax goes to the M S B A, and that's how schools get billed across the Commonwealth. And, um, so thinking about that from, from a Boston to Williamstown and Lanesboro perspective is pretty magnificent. Thinking about it, that these two towns came together not only to form a new region, but in very close proximity to build a magnificent educational facility. It's really special, and I, I hope we all hold, um, that process and the people that made it happen in our, in our heads and our hearts to remind ourselves of what, what, uh, extraordinary people who comprise extraordinary communities can do, uh, when they get together. Um, we received the draft audit report on July twenty-eighth. We had eight days to look it over and get it back to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Um, the draft report for, for our purposes becomes final once I give it an okay, once, uh, Joe Bergeron, the school business official, gives it an okay, and once Christina, as chair, signs off on it. Um, our report was approved, it was signed, and it was returned to the M S B A within this statutory ten-day period, and this project will appear on the August Massas- Massachusetts School Building Authority, uh, meeting, a board meeting agenda. And we're waiting some details on how we can participate, or at least be there to see this, uh, get final board approval. Really have to start the thank yous right now with thanking, uh, Hugh Daly and Steve Wentworth, who are from the Finance Committee of the School Building Commission. Um, for, for giving these numbers a, a close once-over. Anybody that's had the honor of working with either Hugh or Steve. Um, these folks bring keen, keen, keen business minds to the business of building a school and, uh, clearly served their communities well. So our thanks to them for looking this and giving this a final once-over. A thank you to Trip Elmore, who is our, uh, owner's project manager representative from Doran Whittier, who was our O P M, uh. I didn't get to work with Trip a lot, but I really am grateful for the time that I did get to spend, uh, with him, and very grateful for his, um, support in getting us through this final, uh, stage. And, uh, Donna Nary, our own Mount Greylock Regional School District Treasurer, also gave this a look. As did Christina, as did Joe, and as did I. And in conversation, we realized that we were at a point where this all made perfect sense. The things the states said they were going to cover, they covered. The things that the state was very clear from the start, they were not going to cover. They did not cover through the grant. And, uh, and so we signed off on that and got it sent back to the M S B A. Want to give you just a couple of different looks at this. This first look, interestingly enough, although not surprisingly, this first look was put together by Hugh Daly, um, looking at the, the, you know, at the, at the beginning of this process, once we were through feasibility, once the design was, was chosen and the M S B A really got down to brass tacks to talk about money. Um, the approved budget from the, uh, from the M S B A's, the, the, the max that they were going to be willing to, uh, to pay on this project was, was just over thirty-three million dollars. Um, per the final audit that we received on the twenty-eighth of July, the, uh, the, the state grant, the monies from the M S B A to the project wound up being almost three point, uh, thirty-one, uh, point seven, almost, uh, you know, almost thirty-two, uh, million dollars. The entire project cost at its, uh, approval in, uh, January of sixteen was close to sixty-five million dollars. The final appro- the final cost, uh, as, as it was completed and, and everything was done, um, really close to that within forty-four thousand, one hundred six dollars of, uh, the budgeted cost. The district share in January of sixteen was, uh, thirty-one and a half million dollars. That wound up being closer to thirty-three million dollars, which in conversation with Hugh and conversation with Steve. Um, that was all things that the School Building Commission understood as we moved through this, and certain things were added to the project. Certain things were done that do not fall under the scope of what the Massachusetts School Building Authority, uh, was, was, uh, willing to, you know, pays for as a rule. And so, you know, the good news of this, if you saw the rest of, of Hugh's message that where this, uh, chart was embedded, was that, you know, we, we came in right where we said we were gonna come in, and, um, and that's a really good thing and a remarkable thing. If you, if you look at Steve's look, uh, from this, and thank you, Steve, and I was with Steve when he presented this, uh, briefly to the, uh, Lanesboro Select Board. Um, on this center, you, you see, this was, this was the lowest, um, amount of money that was likely to come from the state to, uh, this project. The maximum that the state grant could have been, uh, was, was, um, thirty-five, um, thirty-five point five, and, uh, you know, the actual wound up coming in at that, uh, thirty-two point nine. If you think back to Steve's, actually, this is the district share, not the state share. Here's that thirty-two million, nine hundred fifty going to, uh, to Steve's chart. Here's that thirty-two million, nine hundred and fifty. So we were not at the low end, we were not at the high end, we were closest to the actual midpoint. Um, and, you know, at this point, the M S B A was holding out one point six million, and, um, at some point that, um, following the, the board meeting, uh, late in August of the M S B A, those funds will be released to the district, um, at the September school committee meeting. Joe will be on to talk about what this means. You remember during our, our budget preparation cycle, we were talking about some of the short-term borrowing that we needed to do to, um, pay the debts that we owe between budget time and, and when this final approval and, uh, final audit from the M S B A comes in. And, uh, Joe will be here in September when we have a, a firm handle on what that means for our, uh, for our short-term temporary borrowing. Um, just, you know, at this point, the rest of this presentation, it's not much longer. I do apologize for the time. It is a pretty celebratory thing. It's worth the effort. Um, we really, as, as a regional school district, as the Mount Greylock Regional School District, want to thank everybody that was involved um, a decade ago in envisioning this and thinking about it and realizing that the time had come to replace, uh, a building that was approaching, uh, half a century in terms of service to the community. Uh, we really want to thank the folks who are on the School Building Committee for just countless hours. Um, what a, what a massive task to, to, um, to sit down and, and work. to sit down and and work not only to build a school that serves such a vital and important function. That's massively responsible. But to do that, knowing that really every cent of what's going into construction are public dollars earned by hardworking people um, in Lanesboro, in Williamstown, and across the other uh, three hundred and forty-nine communities that comprise the Commonwealth. Um, a massive amount of work by by all of these folks. And uh, just really want to thank, including those that are here on this meeting tonight. Thanks to all of you for making this happen for our students. Uh, there's a plaque when you walk into the school in the in the entryway that that contains all of these names and um, you know, for those of us that are that are here right now, these are friends and neighbors and public servants and people that we know twenty, thirty years from now. They will, I hope, remain, even if if uh, the people seeing that plaque in in the decades to come don't know these folks personally. I hope that occasionally people pause for thought about what this group of remarkable people gave um, to the community. Do want to thank the the school committee um, who served, you know, during construction and the opening of the school and uh, here again, you know, you all are uh, are showing up and uh, thank you to to all of all of the school committee from that time period. That's just, it's a big thing to to be on a school committee at all times, but to do it while you're building a school in a school of this scale, just remarkable and uh, very grateful to all of these folks. Very grateful to Rob Winok, um, our operations director. Rob is just um, so closely intertwined professionally and and just personally, given the amount of time that he spent. Uh, and that he continues to spend to make sure this building is functioning as well as it can for the good of kids and the people that work there. Um, and and really want to thank all of the community members, all of the parents, the guardians, the caretakers of children, and the students themselves that advocated for this new school. I am sure that there's a few people on the school committee right now who sort of the seed for for thinking about um, giving up your free time and taking on the the glory and glamour of school committee service. I suspect there's people serving right now that the seed got planted through going out into the town and advocating for this new school building. And uh, we're grateful to everybody who who took on that role. We're grateful to everybody that that went to the meetings and voted um, to to fund, to fund this launchpad for lives uh, up on uh, up on the hill in Williamstown. And um, and we're very grateful to everybody who continues to support, you know, the school through paying tax bills. But but as importantly is that that support, um, supporting the school through uh, taking care of our students, helping us be more reflective practitioners and have a better understanding of what individuals and families in the community want from their school. And um, and how to continue constantly envisioning how we can serve students better. Um, using using the Mount Graylock Regional School is just an amazing uh, backdrop uh, upon which and in which to do that work. Um, thank you. Finally, I am reaching out. Thank you to all of the elected and appointed officials in uh, Lanesboro and Williamstown who gave their time and energy to this project. Really, this 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 kind of project reaches into every department within a town. Um, from the Police Department for Security Advice and the State Police for Security Advice into the Treasurer's Office, into the zoning offices, um, into the building inspection offices. Uh, it just, it just really reaches into every office and every town hall. And thank you to the folks who are willing to uh, to have your offices reached into to help make this project a reality. Thank you to all of the teachers, the staff, and the administrators who weighed in so heavily and so importantly on the needs, the hopes, and the dreams that uh, the people that come to work in this building every day um, had for their building. And and the same thank you goes to the students who helped inform that. Really, it's, it, thank you to the construction professionals. It's uh, you know, it's one thing to look at a school building as as a building, and you can almost take it as a single entity. In some ways, it's a monument to learning. But um, but it but it's a monument comprised of uh, hundreds of thousands of pieces. Um, pieces that were that were designed, pieces that were engineered, and pieces that were painstakingly put together by um, by people who who have dedicated their life to the different trades that are represented in that building. And we're very grateful to those folks who were there in the heat and in the cold and in the rain and in the sun to uh, to physically put this place together. Uh, and then really thinking about this journey, and this is a nice opportunity for me to go back and look at the minutes uh, going back to twenty thirteen of uh, the School Building Commission. It was a real pleasure for me as as a longtime friend and to see a name of somebody I considered uh, you know, a a a mentor of mine in some ways, a wonderful colleague of mine, and always and a friend. Uh, to see Rose Ellis's name as being here at the at the beginning of envisioning this and working to get into feasibility. Um, just uh, and Rose also, you know, sort of went from being the Williamstown Superintendent to being the Union Superintendent, which was the first step to the region that we are now. So wonderful to see uh, her name. I and I hope Rose is uh, I know she's probably not seeing this, but I hope she's feeling the warmth of being talked about in the best way uh, possible. And then thank you to Superintendent Grady, who um, who not only um, was here to to do the massive, to help oversee and 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 run the the massive task of building a region. But at the same time was was literally overseeing the construction of uh, of this school uh, which opened in twenty eighteen. So yeah, I'm very grateful to everyone who's come before me professional, uh, positionally uh, to get to this building that that I now have the honor of of being in service to and to the people that work there as well as our other two schools in Lanesboro and Williamstown. But just so much gratitude for me and on behalf of the entire district to to just every individual that uh, that that got us here. And um, I think that day in August when the MSBA, you know, votes this and and we're kind of done is just a a great day and a celebratory day. And I hope you all recognize the celebrations you deserve. I hope people watching this recognize the celebrations they deserve. And uh, we're very excited about uh, reaching that point and now putting really all of our energies into how can we make this place and our two elementary schools uh, even better places physically, emotionally, uh, and in all ways um, serving kids just better and better and better as we as we move along through time. So I will stop my share with that. And uh, if there's any questions or comments.
Thank you, Jake.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm not hearing any, any noise from the committee. All right, so we can move on to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent report.
Oh, this, this part is uh, probably going to be shorter than the business officials' report. Um, truth be bold. Let me just get the agenda back up. Um, just briefly, um, on, we we had a uh, superintendents from across the Commonwealth did a Zoom call with the commissioner on Friday afternoon. There'll be another call for folks that weren't able to make it on August twenty-fourth, but we were there. You know, essentially, the the state's approach to COVID this year, the Commonwealth, the Dussies' approach is that um, basically right where we were last spring. Um, there there is no masking mandate. There is no testing mandate coming from the state. Um, there is no support for testing. Last year, the state really covered our entire testing program. Um, there is no support for that this year. We did uh, lay in a really, really healthy supply of home testing kits, which we will be um, getting clearance medically to be able to administer those ourselves, the parents who choose to sign off to allow us to do that, but only to those uh, students whose parents or guardians or caretakers have signed off. Uh, and then we're very happy to to have lots of home tests that we can distribute. Um, we will be reaching out to the physicians that we've been working with throughout the pandemic and um, working with our school nurses. And uh, in having the conversation about, you know, what what, if anything, are we going to do as we approach into the new school year? Um, I think at this point, it's pretty clear we will not be um, including after-school activities like drama and athletics. We will not have a mandated testing program to participate in those activities. Um, we are continuing to keep an eye on where the CDC is. Currently, the s- the Mass Department of Health recommendations are that we we should ask families to report positive cases of their students to the school district. Those students will isolate for five days. Um, and then come back and be masked for five days after that point. But I also know the CDC came out with with what appeared to me to be some new and different guidance just late this afternoon. So we'll be wrapping our heads around all of that and getting out to the families we serve and to the staff. Exactly how we will be approaching this as we move into the new school year. Ursula?
All right, I should have unmuted before.
That's all right.
So I had two questions, and you just touched on one. I was actually just hearing on the news this evening that the CDC had changed the um, quarantine policy whereby if you're in contact with someone with COVID, you don't have to quarantine whether you're vaccinated or not. So I assume that that'll be the school's policy, and there won't be any, you know, you're out of school if you happen to be in close contact with someone.
Yeah. So we're, we're gonna have to, you know, we we, I did see that this afternoon. I don't know that we have seen that, and that's, that's why we're, we're you know, we, we've been kind of itchy to reach out to the doctors and to, you know, look to the Mass Department of Health um, all summer. But we also, you know, every time we would touch base with the state, they would say CDC keeps telling us they're gonna be making some changes, so just wait. So we'll, we'll be hopefully, you know, a week or so before school starts, we'll be getting out the families, you know, in pretty fine detail. Here's, here's our expectations for the year.
And my other question was, and I had asked this maybe last month or a few weeks ago, and I know the answer was different because I think this changed. But I think that I had heard that school lunches will be free again for this year, which I think is tied to COVID still in some way, which is why I'm asking it now.
It is. Yeah, that's, that's something else that will be going out. So the the federal program that made um, school lunches universally free of charge has ended. But Massachusetts has chosen to extend it for another year, um, to their credit, for which we're very grateful. The the one real change, and I'm glad to have an opportunity to speak about it. Um, the state is asking us, they can't demand it, and we will not be demanding it of families. But we, we are asking our families to please, um, you know, we, we have some students that are directly certified to receive um, free lunch. That's, those are those are names that come to us from the state because of a student's participation in another state-funded program. Uh, Mass Health being a common one, Foster Child Program being another one, you know, there's lots of ways. Um, the other way families can qualify before universal qualification is to actually do some paperwork. Um, it's, it's online now, but we call it paperwork. Uh, so we are asking the families that are not directly certified to to please go ahead. If you think that you might um, qualify for a free lunch, to go ahead and do that paperwork because the state is asking us to collect as much of that data as possible. So they can understand how to best move forward after this year as we head into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. But you are correct. Once again, this year lunches will be um, free of charge for for students. Carrie?
Yeah, Jake, could you speak a little bit more about that data and how confidential it is and how the state uses it?
Happy to. Um, there's
I I sense, sorry, let me just tell you why I'm asking is that I have I think perhaps we've been told that it tends to be under-reported, that families are hesitant to file the paperwork, and maybe that's when it had to be filed with the district. Maybe now that it's done online, there would be less hesitancy, but it would be really helpful to know how the data is used.
Yeah, the the data is really used. First of all, the data really works to stick to the things that matter in making a determination for this. So it's not looking at things, for instance, like immigration status. It's not asking about, you know, very highly personal things like that. It's, it's really working to get at what is your annual income as a household and how many individuals live in that household? Because that's really the calculus. Um, and uh, you know, I I spent some time with with Jake Shuts as he was he was going through doing the process online just to get a feel for what it was like. It's very complex. It's very complex. It um, you know, we're sitting there and and after looking at it for a few minutes, it's like, okay, we, we have two bachelor's degrees, two master's degrees, and a doctorate between the two of us. And we're kind of giving each other blank stares on some of these things. So that's that's a concern that we have. Um, and really, I I for this year, this data is really being utilized primarily not to look necessarily at it on an individual basis, but to look at community by community, a region by region. What the real numbers are, because that concern that you expressed of under-reporting is very real for a number of reasons. And um, we, we hope that this helps solve it, the fact that it's not going to be, you know, your kid's principal looking at it, although I found as a principal, it was really handy to be the one that actually certified those because I, you could pick up on where somebody misunderstood or under-reported something or over-reported something uh, often. So um, as as we work through the process this year, I think we'll have clearer answers on that. But I would say as a blanket statement, when families get that paperwork and if families feel they they may qualify. And we would really ask all of our families to take a look at it and and consider doing it. But particularly for the families that think they may qualify and do want to go ahead and do it for future years. If there's any confusion at all, and if you're have any comfort at all, or there's anybody at the school that you are comfortable with doing so, please allow us to to serve you by helping out with with that paperwork if you if you run up against a dead end.
And then in terms of confidentiality, in a year where it's lunches are not being provided by the state, it is kept in our
It's
system and it shows up at the register, you know, I mean, how
It does. Like on on a daily basis for a student going through the lunch line, um, the students are using, everybody's using their their number anyway. Um, so it's not really, the the electronic systems that came into to widespread use about a decade ago in cafeterias really took away any of the sort of calling out who is and who isn't. So that's, that's an excellent point, too. Thank you for making that.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that, Carrie. I think it's really seamless to the kids.
It is.
As far as who's, the other thing I just wanted to add, Jake, and I don't, I'm, I'm just speaking what my belief is, but I would guess that having the data as much as we can about, you know, what you were just discussing, um, I think like in Pittsfield where when you, when you get to a certain level or when there's more information about the community, there's more um, aid offered overall, right? So it just seems like it's really important data to have. I just wanted to add that, that
Yeah, it it is. It is sort of the cutoff is like as a district, when you reach that fifty percent of your student population qualifies, then you become a universal district, which Pittsfield was for a number of years before the COVID measures. And I, and I really think that's uh, again, credit to the folks in in Boston whose leadership got us here for another year. I think they they wanted to do, first of all, it's hard to give a family something and then all of a sudden take it away. Um, and even even for families for whom lunches aren't a financial hardship, sometimes it's a time hardship or a getting to the store hardship. Sometimes it's a time hardship or a getting to the store hardship, or you know, there's, there's sort of a. There's three hundred and sixty degrees of challenge that can come from getting a child out of the house by. The weird hours of the morning with, with lunch in their hand. Um, so I think the state really invested in this. To try to get a handle on, A, is it worth investing in? For, for the future and building this in as a regular expenditure at the state level and B. Um, there, there may be new communities and new regional school districts and new municipal school districts. That, that may find themselves qualifying, that maybe wouldn't have perceived themselves as qualifying for the universal program before. So I'm very grateful that the state has given us this space to figure this out correctly. Before just jumping right back into, you know, pay up. Anything else on that? Okay, thank, I'm really, really glad that you asked about that. Um, I should have had that on the agenda, so you, you bailed me out. So thank you. Um, the director of DEI and B updates, um, as you know, we reposted. We encouraged everybody that had applied the first time to apply. Um, looking at it this afternoon, we have five applicants right now. You know, when, when we, when we get everybody back to school who's going to comprise the hiring team, we will have a conversation about what. What we need to do, what we've not done well and how we get a more robust pool for that, including maybe just. May- maybe it's just the time of year that we started looking and now as we're into crunch time with school starting, maybe that's impacting this. But um, I think we have some work to do, to continue to do on the applicant pool before we move forward with that. Um, the wellness policy continued, kind of hit pause over the summer, but um. The committee has hit pause, but Nolan Pratt's been, been doing a lot of homework at looking and gathering what some other districts both, both locally. And across the state are doing to address the deficiencies that we had in the way we approached the wellness policy. And uh, so once school starts and that committee starts getting back together, uh, I don't think it's gonna be a real heavy lift. We will have. Something by September, October to bring to the uh, to the Policy and Governance Subcommittee to, to. To reimagine our, our wellness and nutrition policies um, to some degree. Uh, the, the Lanesboro Elementary Boiler, yeah, I know you all followed this, you know, through, through I Berkshires. And we're grateful for that information source. Um, I hope that we kept you well up to date on what was going on and what meetings were happening and what approaches we're taking. Um, the, the boiler, the, the, the uh, the boiler's been ordered. And uh, essentially, you know, we, we have Lanesboro saying, look, just because of when this is happening and, and. You know, over the timeline of the fiscal year, uh, it's very challenging for us to identify. Exactly where we're going to take this money from. The ARPA money was really the lone easy. Um, place to go for that and most of that money was already spoken for by their ARPA committee. Um, so you know, Lanesboro was very clear, we understand, we are, we are paying for this minus the five thousand dollars. That the regional agreement, the lease agreement require of the school district. Um, and then that will be payable upon the work being completed and testing and being successfully done, which will not be until March. Uh, at the earliest. So um, so we're going full steam ahead on that. It was a wonderful opportunity to get to work with. The Lanesboro Finance Committee and the Lanesboro Select Board and with their ARPA Committee. And uh, we're grateful for all the time and, and uh, interesting thoughts that they put into this to finally get us to a point where. You know, the, the promise is there, the understanding is there that it will be paid for. But um, giving, giving a little more time gives them much more flexibility and actually a lot more information in terms of having their. Free cash certified. Uh, to, to move forward and identify from where they will take the money to pay for that. But the project will go ahead. We, we have um. Rob Lenook again added to his juggling act and has identified um, one in New England, one. Uh, contractor that does provide temporary external heating systems that can be plugged into. Current heating systems, we have the uh, the old boiler being put back together so that it's there. And ready to go on the very coldest days. So um, so we have Plan A moving forward. We have Plan B. Uh, to some degree, ready to execute and uh, we look forward to getting that work, work done. Carrie, did you have a question?
Um, no, I was just gonna say that the conversation about the boiler with Lanesboro town officials seemed to open up a conversation. About the long-term needs of the building. And um, is that? You know, it's encouraging that they are now gonna add the Lanesboro. School to their list of buildings that need to be supported in a long-term fashion. So was that? Good news to us?
I, I think it's wonderful news. Um, you know, the, the, the. Sort of looking for the silver lining to what, what started to look like a stormy cloud with the boiler. You, you know, this, this was just a really organic, great way to get the Josh Lang, the new town administrator. Not, not really that new anymore, but um, in, in Berkshire terms, the new town administrator. Um, Josh was wonderful. He came up to the building, Rob walked him through sort of every aspect of the job. Um, you know, he, he got a, another layer of eyes on the building. Um, Glenn Story, the lead custodian from Lanesboro Elementary was, was at the meetings right along with us. At the, at the Lanesboro Town Hall and um, really with, with Rob's expertise at the table and Glenn's expertise at the table. And the care that both of them bring to the table. Uh, with, I think it opened up what is an excellent line of communication and what is really good news about the fact that. You know, it's, it's amazing that we have three buildings, none of which is, is older than twenty-one or twenty-two years old. But twenty-one or twenty-two year old buildings will, there, there's a lot of things that, that. We need to be tending to. And I think in terms of, of both of our towns thinking through. Medium term and longer term capital projects that will impact their budgets. This, this was actually a very good opportunity and we're, we're grateful that we had such uh, such good partners in Lanesboro. To, to take advantage of the opportunity to start that conversation. So thank you. That's an excellent point. Um, remote meetings, uh, I believe that we are approved for remote meetings through March of twenty-twenty-three. At this point. We did take the opportunity through the Design Selection Committee. Uh, in doing the interviews um, with, with uh, CH, CHA and SLR. We did actually, Rob Lenook got some, some equipment that he had ordered a while ago, but, but got it up and running and mounted. Um, so we did one of those meetings as um, a hybrid meeting of, you know. Somebody joining by Zoom, somebody joining by telephone, actual people in the room, a presentation happening. Uh, and I, it, it was not flawless necessarily, but it went very smoothly. It, it would be a very different setup. Then uh, then I think the school committee had in the past, just physically in terms of the way the room would need to be situated and where people sat. And um, I believe it would. We would really be using Zoom as opposed to a live YouTube broadcast as our means of getting this out to the outside world. Uh, but, but. When the school committee wants to have the conversation about, you know, doing some things back altogether with, with people. For the most part in the same room, uh, or when this, this extension of the, the change in the open meeting law expires. Uh, we'll, we'll be ready to do that and meet that in a way that will be uh, that will be, that it will work for the people on the committee. And it will work for folks at home, um, who, who want to watch and or participate.
Jake, are we committed to that physical setup? So the way. It was basically for those who weren't there, it was one long table. And the screen was at the end of the table and. The screen was used for both presentations and for anybody who was zooming in. And then of course, the telephone was easy. That's just, you know, in the middle of the table, but. I wonder if the camera can be mounted. In the back of the room to, to view the committee. But then people who are coming on via Zoom, and maybe that's the issue with using Zoom. Is that it all has to be in the same s- screen, so to speak.
Yeah, and I, I think that's the challenge and that may even, I, I, I'll go look at it um, this week, early next week. But I, the, the camera maybe, at least in the system that we have right now, the camera, I believe, is actually mounted. With the screen. So that, that would be a drawback, but it's, but it's um. Also, I do, I don't think we've extended the full capabilities of what we could do. We really got that, that meeting set up a, a day or two ahead. And thanks to Rob sort of stopping everything and doing it. So we, we may have other options, Carrie. We'll have to, we'll have to look further into that. Because it was, it was not an ideal setup for the physical meeting, nor for the remote necessarily. But it, but it could.
Got the job done. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, utilitarian. Utilitarian. Um, you know, in terms of hiring and start of school updates, uh, we are. Uh, our principals have been busy, special ed uh, staff have been busy all summer trying to fill positions. We still have um, several paraprofessional positions left to fill. We're having real, real challenges there. So anybody that hears this that would like to have a conversation about being a paraprofessional. And uh, in really, Williamstown Elementary and Mount Greylock particularly, but also I believe we just have an opening in Lanesboro. And then really, uh, probably by tomorrow or Monday, we do have one grade level at Lanesboro that is, that is um. Eclipse where, where I'm comfortable with. It's a grade level where we have one section and one section only. Um, and we're, we're sitting at about twenty-two kids that are in that classroom. And when I look through. The, the makeup of those children in terms of five oh four plans, uh, individualized education plans. And then I look and see that we also have a waiting list of five or six students who would like the school choice into that grade. Um, we're, we're just doing a little bit more math, but I think that's a section where. It would serve every child better if we looked at actually adding a teacher, um, which is very short notice, but we did this last year. Um, it's, it's one of those things. It was actually the budget, the one budget request that Nolan brought. Uh, that the school council was really ahead of. Um, our decision-making process at the time with, with nineteen kids was. Let's, let's not split it right now as we're doing the budget in February and March and April. But with a promise of keeping an open mind that if that class grows or the nuances of that class change. We would of course be open to doing whatever we need to do to best serve um, the kids uh, in, in any of our schools. And we're just about to that point where we're going to need an add, add, to add a second section in order to just be um. Be doing our best work for those kids.
Which grade, Jake?
It's second grade. Yeah, it's second grade, Carrie. Yep. Yep, and, and you all may remember that that was sort of the one. That was the one that the school council was, was really pushing the hardest and was, was understanding and patient when we said, that's wait and see. We've wait, we've waited, we've looked and it seems like. That's the right thing to do for, for kids and for the school. Um, so we will, uh, in September, um, we are welcoming uh. Uh, several, I think six or seven new teachers uh, into the mix this year and several new paraprofessionals. We're gonna be welcoming them on August twenty-second. They'll be coming in for their, their first day. Very grateful to the teachers and the administrators that ran these processes to bring in uh, new colleagues and um. Very exciting and we'll have further updates with more specifics when we get into September and actually start school. Christina?
Yeah, I just, going back to the need for paraprofessionals, I just wanted to mention that I saw. A local news story about BCC and MCLA. Offering an associates to bachelor's program that's specifically geared towards paraprofessionals. So.
Yeah.
Mention that, um, I think it, I think it's designed both to get more paraprofessionals into the region's school systems. But also to increase um, our certified teachers. Cause there's, you know, there's shortages in both places.
Yeah, tha- thank you for mentioning that Christina. That's absolutely correct. And we're, we're, we're really grateful. The BCC and MCLA have been working at this for some time and really, um, I, I think again, another. Another good thing to come from COVID is this recognition that online learning can really work for almost everyone and make. You know, the, the notion of having a full-time job, being a parent and then, oh, I have to go to class two or three times a week. Just not realistic in working with people's lives. Um, and so we uh, we're, we're very glad and grateful to the folks. Who are, uh, you know, helping paraprofessionals get, get that uh, associates, go to MCLA. Get the uh, get the bachelor's and a teacher certification. So it works on the paraprofessional front. It also works on the teacher front, um, because we're, we're. You know, it, it's, it's just, it's tough everywhere to recruit employees and uh, to recruit people who are. Great in their fields and, and have a real heart and a head for children is, is equally hard. So thank you for bringing that up. And our contract actually has, um, you know, funding in it to help paraprofessionals cover the, the financial burden. Of, of doing those kind of uh, programs as well. So more to come on hiring and where we are in terms of enrollments. And all of those uh, start of school things in September and October. So that's, oh, Carrie?
Yeah, um, Jake, I wanted to know, do we do a um. An orientation or a first day program for all three schools where we bring all the teachers together? Or is it done individually by the school?
Yeah, this, this year and we, we. We didn't debate, but we discussed for some time the notion of a convocation and bringing everybody together. And uh, gen- generally speaking, this is my experience in Pittsfield too. And Lee, it was easy because we were all on the same campus. It was a walk up the hill or a walk down the hill. So to, to, to answer your question, we are not doing a district-wide gathering of everybody. You know, some of that is over continued concerns that folks have about COVID. Um, but for the most part, it's that those, the days that the teachers come back in pre-service before the students come back. They are kind of end-to-end professional development getting ready. So um, neither the, the principals nor the teachers were that interested in, in. Taking time to travel um, and, and using time that way. So those will be happening in each individual school, Carrie. Yep. And um. I think that's it. I was just looking, I think that's it. For uh, the, the school trip to, to Puerto Rico will be on the September agenda. So my uh, I, I'm, I misinterpreted an email around that, my fault. So we're gonna not have that on tonight's agenda. So that's it. Thank you all for the time.
Great, thank you, Jake. Okay, next up on the agenda are upcoming meetings. There is a change um, in the posted. Agenda in terms of upcoming meetings. Um, so I'd like to note again that the Policy and Governance Meeting is going to be August thirty-first. Um, the Finance Subcommittee is meeting August twenty-fifth and September. I can't believe I'm saying that month out loud. And the school committee, full school committee, regular session will also be on the eighth. I do not have any other items for discussion, any agenda requests. Okay. So would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Ursula moves. Do I have a second?
A second?
Carrie seconds. Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
We have to vote.
Yes, all in favor? Oh, sorry.
Like the Teddy Murphy.
Did I miss mine? Did we vote? Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
My eye, sorry.
Green eye.
Henry eye. Okay, this meeting is adjourned at 7:23.
Good night.
Thank you.